Commissioner Waymeyer.
Here.
Commissioner Harris, Chair Howard.
Present. If you'll all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Todd Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come here and pray the invocation. It is truly an honor to be front of you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Let's bow. Heavenly Father, as we do seek your guidance and we see and read through Scripture that your people came to you and sought your advice and your guidance throughout history, help these people right here, right now, seek your will for this county, for the good of the people, for your good, God. Help us to do your will in this county. We are blessed to have leaders that do seek your face. So, guide us through this process, give us clarity, and help us to go forward, even in the minute details of the job that they have to do. Give them clarity and give them a peace and a satisfaction for what they are doing. Help them to know that they are cherished and loved by the people of this county for the jobs that they are doing. God, we love you. It's in Jesus's name we pray all of this. Amen. Thank you.
Morning, Cleon. Okay, that takes us to correspondence and organizational business. John?
I have none, but the county treasurer has some.
Two.
I would just like to present and recognize Jody Edwards for completing two levels of treasure certification classes. So, the treasure certification classes are actually four different levels sponsored by the Kansas County Treasurers Association. So, as you finish a level, they actually have certificates. They work with the Ford Hasty University. So, Jody's completed the first two. And I may have Jody just kind of read off the topics and what her sort of, here I can pull this, what this covers.
Various subjects of treasures, calendar of reports, items on current tax, things to do immediately after you take office, motor vehicle, of course, different things of employee importance, FMLA, workman's comp, and difficult people that you might encounter
That's truly not the wrong.
over the counter, and fraud as well. I have to say that one was extremely interesting.
And then, as far as some other subjects that are covered in, like the remaining two, their training just covers broad areas. There's like investment options, investments, bankruptcy, basic computer, you know, there again, you know, policies about where everyone has internet access, just kind of some good guidelines on that. Tax transparency, they touch on human resources, different topics that directly affect our office. Delinquent personal property, the steps going through the full collections from when we send out the tax statements to when they go to the sheriffs for warrants, and then, and those aren't warrants for arrests. That is just tax warrants. It's just part of the process. Then on up to the newspaper publication, and then they actually get filed in district court. And then, we have ethics, ad valorem legal issues. We even had one on homeland security and courthouse security, and the legislative processes and procedures. So, through all their training, you do get a wealth of information. So, it's just really good that, you know, we have the opportunity to, you know, get into these classes and go through the completion. So, anyway, I think it's important and, you know, very valuable. So, like I said, Jody's halfway through now, so she's going to continue on her course. Thank you.
Thank you, for sure.
Okay, takes us to public comment. We do have one signed up. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Jean?
Jean Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street, Pomona, Kansas. The first item I have to ask, on the bridge out here going to Pomona that is being repaired, is it, is it on schedule being fixed? Is it on schedule?
I don't know.
State Highway. Say, Jean, if you'll check with Mr. Holmes or Mr. Hague, I'm sure they can probably answer that question for you, maybe after the meeting or sometime.
Well, okay, because it's getting worse. I mean, you've got to slow down to the 50 mile an hour. Okay, second thing is, yesterday, I filed a protest on the election at Pomona, the way it was handled. So, I will not go on no details other than that, that it has. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to the consent agenda. If on your agenda, you show the Franklin County Minutes for July the 27th, they are not on the agenda at this time. They're not ready due to the election. So, the only item that we have on the consent agenda day that needs considered and approved will be claim vouchers in the amount of $181,422.62. There are no tax change orders either. With that, I would look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the claim voucher in the amount stated.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, takes us to items of business. The first item of business will be to discuss and approve the May 2016 EMS activity report. Nick?
Good morning, Commissioner. Get caught up on all the activity reports. We go back to May. May, we had 295 calls, averaged 9.52 calls a day. For the year, at the end of May, we were at 1,391, which was 125 calls ahead of where we were the previous year. So, call volume is picking up quite a bit this year. Deposits were really good with a deposit of $89,079.12, which is 22,412.45 over what we have to try to bring in every month. So, like I said, deposits are coming really good. With high deposits, we usually have pretty good adjustments. Adjustment rate, adjustment price was $42,941.10. We did send $12,000 in 1915 to the set-off program, and we spent $2,422.22 Midwest collections. We also had service fees of $175,958.70. So, we were pretty busy. We had 27 move-ups a month. Going to the back page, things we usually watch really big is the number of patients we bring in to ransom. We brought 142 patients to ransom in May. Had a refusal rate of 16%, which is really good. With that many calls, we ran, you know, 295 calls and only had 16%. Focusing real hard on that kind of stuff. Any questions on the May?
Think so. Pretty clear cut. Anybody have any questions?
Roy?
No.
If not, we'd look for a motion to approve the May 2016 EMS activity report.
Move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, item number two, Nick's going to stay with us and discuss the June 2016 EMS activity report.
Okay, to get us caught back up completely here, we had 296 calls in June, averaged 9.87 calls a day, bringing us to 1,687 for the year. That's 175 over where we were in '15. So, still showing an increase in call volume. Very good deposits of $98,179.06, $31,512.39 over the $66,000 we need to bring in a month. Again, with large deposits, we usually have bigger adjustments, adjustment of $63,926.32, $22,116.34 to the state collections. We didn't send any to Midwest. In June, we had a total of $161,643.60 in service fees and 30 move-ups. Jumping back to the back page, we did transport 146 patients to ransom of the 296 we had. 32 went to LATHA. We did have a total refusals of 19.59%. So, we're still under the 22, 23% that we tried to shoot for. So, we were good on that. Also, in June, we did, in May, we got, in the May, we got the delivery of our Sprinter. Still working on finalizing, getting all the lettering correct on that. It's been kind of a mess to get some of that right. Last week, we took delivery of our remount from Lifeline. So, we are up to date on all of our trucks. Everything's been completed this year that we had planned for. So, that's good news.
Could you speak to the different color, why we went with a different color?
I would love to. When we had, talking about the new stuff, we kind of talked about different colors. When we sat down and started looking at them, the number one thing that's really highly recommended right now is the reflective striping. If you look at the truck we remounted the last couple of years ago, we put the reflective striping on the back. It didn't match the maroon, which we usually went with. When you go with maroon striping, it reflects pink. So, we sat down and kind of pondered what was the best options and colors to look at. Went with school colors. Well, we got a lot of different high schools. Didn't want to offend anybody that way. Had them send me some samples of different reflective striping. Black and gold reflects really nice. Also, our county logo is black and gold. So, it was pretty easy to go with that kind of color scheme to do that. And if you look at that truck at night, it's very reflective and looks very sharp. So, our 40th anniversary logo also was black and gold, so it matched up with all that. And if you guys haven't seen it, want to come by and look at it, the truck's over there. With the few modifications we made, I think it looks really good. I know John's seen it. But that was the process in which we went through to figure out, because we didn't want to go with maroon if we weren't going to be able to reflect good and that kind of stuff. So, and also, we did look around at all the different trucks around here. And anywhere in our central region, there's not a black and gold ambulance, where you do have black and red, which is Miami County. You have some different colors like that. So, we wanted to still kind of be a little bit identifiable with different colors. So, that was a process in which we went through. Any questions that I can answer?
When you go to state write-offs, Nick, do they ever reimburse?
What's that?
Do they reimburse when you do the, send it to state write-offs?
The state write-offs, what we put in and what we get back is roughly around 23% to 25%. So, anything we send to state set-off, remember, the only time the state set-off pays us is if somebody wins the lottery, they get inheritance or tax return. Other than that, we don't get a reimbursement from them. Like, a lot of your collection agencies, they will, you know, make a few phone calls and help work with it that way. They'll also negotiate with them a little bit. With the state set-off, that money just sits there and waits. It may be, we've had issues where it's been 15 years and we finally get something. And you can probably guess the phone calls we get at 15 years, somebody, because they're forgotten. By that time, they even had a bill, and they call pretty irate. So, but that's the process in which the state set-off uses.
Nick, are you seeing more requests from people to go to Ransom Memorial?
I don't know if we have more requests. We have a lot more people that'll go there. You know, we, what we do, we go on a call if it's closer here, we'll ask, you know, do you want to, we'll take you out to ransom and get you checked out. Used to, in the past, we've had people that say, man, I don't know if I want to go there. But we don't have that as much anymore. We've really educated our crews on talking to the patients on what's best for them to, you know, with our collaboration with ransom, a lot of our protocols mirror theirs. So, if, you know, the patient's serious, let's say it's a stroke patient, we know what's going to happen throughout that process. We're real versed in it. And the benefits have spoke for themselves. So, we can usually use that kind of stuff to convince patients to come this way or that. But as far as the calls I've been on, I haven't heard near the stuff that we used to hear about coming in.
That's great.
It is very good.
Any more questions? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve the June 2016 EMS activity report. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second.
Commissioner Renaud.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, third item would be consider setting a public hearing for the meeting on August the 17th, 2016, to consider vacating Indiana Road south of 68. Chip?
Good morning, Commissioners. The department has received a request from all four property owners to vacate Indiana Road south of K-68. The request is a motion setting a public hearing at the meeting on August 17th to hear comments concerning this vacation.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward. All four property owners, you say, have signed that?
Yes, sir.
How long a section is that?
That's three quarters of a mile. It goes south to a dead end.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any questions on that? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve setting a public hearing at the commission meeting on August the 17th, 2016, to consider vacating Indiana Road south of 68.
Before we make a motion, four properties, if any of them, if we vacate this road, is there an easement drawn up?
Nope.
So, what if one of those back in the back changes hands, and, or one of them at the front changes hands, they don't want to allow access?
If any of the four were to be denied access, they could condemn their way back out and reopen a public road.
Cole, there also, there would be an easement called a prescriptive easement, basically an easement by necessity that would likely arise in the situation that you're contemplating.
My only thought is we've done these before, but it's usually once, I think the last one was Osborne, where one landowner bought all the property, so there wasn't this situation. To my memory, we've tried to never landlock anybody, but we would in effect be doing this, wouldn't we?
They're voluntarily accepting not having public access.
I mean, I understand that now. It's just a little concern down the road. I mean, we deal with zoning things all the time, or, for instance, where somebody's built on them a minimum maintenance road. Well, it was okay then, but then it changes hands, and all of a sudden, it's not okay. I just worry that that might happen here.
You just dealt with that down in the Central Heights area, where someone got a deed and wanted to open the road back up.
I mean, I understand it when it's all one owner, but I guess even then, if their parcels aren't combined, they could still sell off, could be busted up, but.
By vacating a road, then do we allow a fence to go down the middle of the road? The property owners bring their fences to the middle of the road?
There are no fences there now.
But I mean, would that be?
It's all crop ground. I don't see a reason why.
Property line would be center of the road, effectively. So, yes, they could.
Right, so that's what they could do now. Okay.
Any more questions on this?
Was this a request to come from somebody or from the county?
No, it came from one of the property owners.
Okay, okay.
Who gathered the signatures from the other three.
Are they aware of the, the process that if they do, if that property does change hands, the signatories to the petition, are they aware of the process that if somewhere down the line, somebody in Colt's scenario that he's presented, that if somebody comes in and says, hey, I do want this open, that they can, it can be reversed?
Yes.
My knowledge, I swear we did this once, and part of it was, easement was granted to the other landowners as part of us accepting it, vacating the road. It would have been five, six years ago.
I'm not, I'm not aware of an easement being prepared
I don't know if we made.
by my office.
No, it wasn't through, when they presented it to us, they said that some of the landowners that would be landlocking, they showed us that they're giving a easement to the ones farther back. I mean, it was between them. It wasn't through us, but
Right.
I mean, it was just something they showed us. So.
And I don't know, it's unclear to me what the county's responsibility is with regard to giving them legal advice, but ideally, just looking at these properties, yeah, the, and I don't know how to pronounce that first name, but you would have the parties giving the then-landlocked parties a private easement to access, and you would draft it so that it runs with the land. Again, I, they're going to have access by an easement, whether it's expressly in writing or by necessity. So, I do think they'll have access to their land, but I, I understand exactly what you're saying, Cole. So.
Anything else? Would like to make a motion to set the public hearing for August the 17th, 2016?
I'd like a motion to declare August 17th as a public hearing day.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's a second, Deb.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, it takes us to staff reports. John?
Just a reminder that we have the, at 6:00 PM this evening, we have the budget hearing, setting the 2017 budget. So, we'll be here for that, and really, that's all I have at this time.
Eric? Nick, anything else from your department? Alan?
Got a couple of things real quick. The, all the work that we did for the disaster in May, I believe the governor has requested a presidential declaration. We're trying to, they haven't got back with us on all of that yet, but we're trying to see if that has taken place. There's not been a presidential declaration signed by the president yet. But we've been working close with Public Works to make sure that our part got done. Also, last week, with the storms that came through, we had two of our towers, our communications towers, that were damaged. We had to deploy the portable tower and had it in place at one of the sites for a week. If finally, everything was repaired yesterday, they're doing final adjustments on everything, but our system is back up and running 100%. And then finally, we've got a active shooter exercise Friday at Ottawa University. The sheriff's office, police department, Ottawa Fire, ambulance service are all participating in that. We've got quite a few people coming in. Ottawa University has, has been gracious enough to host the location for that. So, if any of you are interested in coming and observing, get ahold of me, and we'll make arrangements with it. Being an active shooter, we're pretty careful about the firearms policy that we have. Everybody has to go through a checkpoint to get into the, the area. So, it's, it's a restricted area for us. But with that being said, you're welcome to come. Just let me know if you want to come and observe the exercise, and we'll make sure that you've got access to it.
I got one quick thing. I was asked the other day by one of the rural fire departments where you're at on the radio situation. Do you have any updates coming up in the future, anything on where we're at?
It's still in the engineering phase. Motorola came out in June, which put a kink in things, about a week after we requested the engineering through TFM Comm. They came out with a bigger and better system that looks like it's exactly what we need. With that being the case, there was a little bit of a delay on getting the information from Motorola to TFM, so that we had an idea on costs and on exactly what the system would do to see if it would fit in for our needs. So, we're still in the process of engineering. At our October deadline, there's no way we can make that. I, I can tell you that right now. Even though that's what we had, we're probably looking at spring to, hopefully, 1st of July next year at our latest.
Deb, anything from your department?
Election was good last night. Home by 9:30.
And still have the canvas at
Monday?
Monday, at nine o'clock? All right. Okay, I believe that's all staff reports. Takes us, Commissioner comments and board reports. Roy?
I went to Pomona City Council meeting Monday night. They set August 17th as their public hearing for their 2017 budget at 5:00. And they had some change orders to their street project that progresses. And, you know, I've, I've had complaints about the street project and how it was going. And I think the people are just going to have to work through a lot of the problems they're having with the street project. Anyway, it's proceeding. And it took care of routine business, pretty much.
Last Wednesday night, I went to the Wellsville City Council meeting. They set their date for their budget hearing. Also had their audit report from their previous year's budget that was presented. Also, they discussed quite a bit with hail damage to the facilities of the city and city-owned vehicles. Also,
Also, it was interesting, they gave a, they issued a building permit, and the building permit, construction of that house, then ended up causing flood damage to the house next door, and had some legal discussion about their involvement in that. Then last, this past Monday night, I went to the Rantoul City Council meeting. Talked about cleaning up the ditches that have been processed. Also, they've ordered some basketball goals to install, they purchased those. They're gonna get some playground equipment from Central Heights and put that there as well. Authorized their city clerk to become a notary. Talked about, had their budget hearing. Interestingly enough, a party wanted to donate the former city hall back to the city, and the city denied, accepting it, they didn't want it, and discussed their agreement with the Cutler Fire Township for using the building. And pretty much that's their report.
Okay, I attended the FCDC Executive Board meeting yesterday. One of the main topics was ways to promote Rock Creek Business Park and, and how we was gonna go about doing that. Also, the director presented a few options that are available to this area right now. Potential businesses are looking at our area, he's working on a meeting with those and trying to promote that was the main topics that we discussed there. John, step in if you want, on anything you wanna add on that, he was also there. And that's pretty much the only thing I've been to. Williamsburg's didn't have a quorum for last Monday night, so they've moved their meeting to next Monday night, and I'll be attending that one next week, so. That's all I have at this point on that. There is one thing I wanna bring up right quick, which I've talked to John and Jim about. I had calls on the dust control, which I had an individual call and said that they were unhappy with the situation that we, we're only giving them one treatment, they've got two treatments in the past, and we cut it down, they only got one treatment, and being charged the same amount of money, and they were not happy with that at all, which I was not aware that that's the way we were doing it. And after talking to Jim, he explained to me that what they're doing now is, in case, if you get this call, is they're actually treating it, and then they're backing up and putting a second treating on while they're there, and that that's the way they do, their private people that buy from them. So I'll get back with my person, but in essence, they're getting the two treatments for the same price, they're just getting them both at the same time, instead of waiting a month or two or a couple of weeks or whatever, and come back and do the second one, that they're putting them both on it while they're there, and supposedly it's as effective or more effective than the other way. So anyway, thank you, Jim, for explaining that to me, and I'll get back with, with them. Okay, anybody have anything else?
Just wanna add one thing. Pomona's gonna be a Mid-America Nutrition site again. They were, had it closed for about six months, and they decided to go ahead and pay the rent back to Mid-America Nutrition for those six months they weren't open, so. Be back in business over there at Pomona.
With that, we'd look for a motion to adjourn. So move. A motion is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We're adjourned, see everybody tonight. Hey, Deb, I got a phone call. Their question was, Ben, I'm on the election, Roy's on the election, is that a problem for canvassing?
I think they've talked about that last night, and Ben's on how you are our board of commissioners, I think they said that that is fine. They'll just make note of it before the canvas.